September 22nd to 2016 to order and invite you to join us in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Chairman, please take the roll. While she's doing that, then I'll read the fire evacuation announcement. Case of fire, there are two ways to exit the chambers. To my left, you'd exit through those double doors, turn left, walk down one flight of stairs, and outside of the building. Perhaps the best way would be to the rear of the chambers through those double doors. In either case, once you're outside of the building, please walk a safe distance away from the building.
I got it?
Val.
Yes. Chairman Durin.
Here.
Commissioner Ballard here.
Yes.
Commissioner Durnan, absent. Oh.
Just read that. I'll throw it to you fast.
Commissioner Falk, absent. I gotta do it once, don't I? Commissioner Lefakis, absent. Commissioner Lad.
Here.
Commissioner Scott.
Here.
Commissioner DeGray.
Here.
Commissioner.
Suzak.
Suzak. Suzak. I told you I'll never get it.
Commissioner Suzak and DeGray will be sitting in for the absent commissioners. At this part in the... Oh, I'm sorry that we eliminated that. No, I'm looking at a different one that I had written notes on. Old business approval minutes, September 1st, 2016, which were in the packets that you received. And are there any additions, errors, or omissions?
I don't know if we dare do that. But yes, there is.
See, he has to prove it too.
Make a motion to approve for September 1st, 2016.
Second.
Again, any additions, errors, or omissions?
Yes, on page 27, paragraph 6. Find it. There it is.
What page?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Who on Neblich Road located in industrial park? Forgot to say who was located there. It's the third one up to the bottom.
Camerata. There's a space between, I think is what they meant.
Okay. What's your point, Commissioner, Mr.?
It doesn't say who was approved on Neblich Road or located on Neblich Road. It just says...
Oh, right.
I'm not sure who that is. Is that Camerata's?
Oh, all right. Yeah, okay. You're right. I took it as Camerata's.
Okay. But you know what I found, though? No spell checks or any of that.
Okay.
But all the way to 26? Twenty-seven.
Last page.
Anyone else?
I just have a question to clarify something. On page six, midway down through the paragraph, it says the driveway along Connecticut Avenue would be closed, and the one driveway on Enfield Street would be shifted slightly to the northeast. I thought they were moving it slightly southeast. I could be wrong, but could you check that for me, please?
I actually watched the video again for that part, and they said slightly northeast.
Okay. I wasn't sure. I couldn't remember. But thank you.
They might have meant southeast, but that would make more sense.
Yeah, okay. They've gotta come back in, so I would make sure we can ask that then.
Yeah, because if they shift it northeast, it brings it closer to the intersection. That was why I was a little confused about it then. All right, thank you.
Okay. Page nine. Six paragraph down. It says Commissioner Durin stated there is a lot of development in the area. I didn't talk about new development. It was just that there was a lot of traffic coming out of there, and there's a lot of development that they aren't aware of. It's not new.
So you want the words "new" struck?
Struck, and after the words "development" in the area. And it doesn't cause an increase really. It's just that everybody goes that way because the light's there. At the second one, I suggested putting a stoplight or a stop sign before or after entrance E to stop the traffic that turns onto Enfield Street from Booth Road. No, it's the traffic that allow... To allow the traffic to turn from Booth Street onto Enfield. The entrance E was the last street down. I think it's Connecticut Avenue or whatever. And if they put the stop bar there, it would give all that area up there room. It would mean probably another light or the light moved down there. But they've gotta stop the traffic somehow before the gas station. That's all my suggestion. So that's two on that page. Page 11 was another one I saw. Second paragraph, asks the reason for using the system was how he knows that streets can't handle that water. It's not storage, but flow. Some of those streets up there, we had trouble, for example, up where the rug company is, and they had to put a retention in because the pipes are too small. Those are probably older pipes up there. Then page 14 was another one. That's 11. Thirteen. Fourteen. Oh. I don't know what number. One, two, three up above. Commissioner Durin closed the public hearing. I didn't close it. I couldn't have. If I did, we wouldn't have been able to move it to September 15th. I hope I didn't close it.
Yeah, you continued it.
That's what I thought. Okay.
That's a very important catch.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Sure, somebody would notice.
Okay. Anything further? Hearing then, all in favor, as amended, the unanimous. Let's see, I am going to... Okay, new business, SPR 168.3.02. I won't ask you to read that, I'll do it. This is a site plan application for a warehouse distribution office and related improvements to parking areas and loading docks located at 25 Bacon Road, I-1 Zone Industrial, 1, MAP 095, Lot 0005, WE 25 Bacon Road LLC. Owner, applicant. And... There's the applicant here, and oh, you're all set up? And when you go up there, if you will, give your names and addresses, and I guess the hand mic is there for you use, and I guess the red button should be on for that one.
Right. Good evening. Are we all mic'd here? I'm Valerie Farrell from Good Earth Advisors, representing the applicant, 25 WE 25 Bacon Road LLC. To my left, Adam Win Stanley, the president of Win Stanley Enterprises. The LLC, as the applicant, is a subsidiary of Win Stanley Enterprises. To my right is Jim Petropolis, who is the lead engineer, site engineer, from Hayner Swanson. We have a brief discussion of the project, and Jim's gonna go through the technical aspects, and then if you have sort of, you know, general questions, Adam would certainly be happy to discuss them. First of all, thank you so much for doing this. We know we were bugging poor Roger for a special meeting, and things were getting a little ahead of us, and things were going fast, and I think the first time we appeared in front of you, we were just making that transition. There wasn't much going on at the building, and there is so much going on at the building right now. We're actually in the midst of renovation of the low bay side, which was our first appearance in front of you. So tonight, we're here for the high bay, and as you remember, this was the 80-foot high ceilings, smaller portion, but there's some substantial improvements going on. And I think, if you recall, last time, we talked about the specialized nature of that building and how it was designed for Hallmark, and Adam and his company have decided to make a substantial investment in order to really accommodate a general tenant. So with that... I thought you didn't... I thought you had a question. You were gonna spring something already. I was like, wait. Jim, let you take through.
Sure.
The details, and then...
Great. Thank you very much.
Can I just ask from a procedural standpoint, since there are people watching at home who may be confused because this commission in August already approved a site plan for 25 Bacon Road, maybe as you make your presentation, you can clarify that this is another building than what was previously approved?
Absolutely. Thank you, Roger, and thank you, Commission. My role tonight is really to present the facts of the project for you, so that you're able to make the best decision you can tonight. And similar to our August 11th meeting, when we were here for our first application, I'm gonna give you a brief overview of the project and talk a little bit about in greater detail why we're here specifically. As you know, we are in 25 Bacon Road in the northeast corner of northeast section of Enfield, Connecticut, and as you read in the record, Mr. Chairman, MAP 95 Lot 5, which is a 282-acre tract in your industrial zone. Our property is abutted by, obviously, Bacon Road to the south, Cottage Road and its residence over by Shaker Pond, I believe, to the west. To the north is the Massachusetts State Line. And to the east in the back is some residences, and then some commercial businesses located in the southeast corner. And as Val said, obviously, this was part of the Hallmark complex that was constructed in the early 80s. Adam and his family business bought this property in June of 2016. And just a little bit about the property, I'm sure you're very familiar with it, but we've got two curb cuts off of Bacon Road. We have a building that exists in really two rectangles that total about a million and 50,000 square feet. And as Val alluded to, this larger rectangle, the one to the west, is what we call the low bay building, 40 feet in height. And we appeared before the commission back in August for some minor site improvements and interior building improvements to re-tenant this particular building from one tenant into two tenants, and that was acted on August 11th. We're here tonight to talk about the high bay, the second smaller pod over to the west part of the... To the east part of the site. Loading docks exist around the campus, smallish parking areas to the north, and there's a fire access road that currently exists that goes around the property on the east side. The balance of the land, as you can tell, wooded in the front, which provides a nice buffer from Bacon Road. We have a combination of wooded areas and open fields, and the backland had been farmed for many, many years. With regard to topography, as I mentioned at the last meeting, very flat site, very gentle grade from the north to the south. We've had wetlands mapped in accordance with local and state criteria. Predominantly, there's a number of wetlands located between the front of our building and Bacon Road in this wooded area here. In fact, this pond was constructed in 1980 to serve as the detention facility for the Hallmark buildings, roof, and paved areas. But over time, a number of drainage swales that were built as part of that have become wetlands. You know, imagine 30 years later, they're carrying runoff, and things take over time. Silt accumulates in the bottom, and they morph into designated map wetlands, and those are all shown on our drawings. What we're proposing tonight, in a little bit greater detail, are improvements to the high bay building. And I'll tell you about the building improvements briefly, and then I'll talk a little bit about the site improvements. But if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just pass out some photos we took as I described the interior improvements, because this is a very unique building. It is 80 feet in height. It was built for the storage for Hallmark. And what you're looking at in that picture are all the racks within this building that run from the floor slab all the way to the roof. In fact, they support the roof. And that building measures, thank you, 350,000 square feet. So it is a large building. It's largely not heated. There's no lighting, you can tell, up on the roof. It was purely there to store envelopes and greeting cards and packages for Hallmark. So it's a very unique building. What we hope to do is transform that unique building into a more conventional, more traditional warehouse distribution facility, and I'd like to describe how we're gonna do that. The building is going to be lowered from 80 feet down to 40 feet. And so the construction team will come in and remove the roof. They will remove that racking that supports the roof. They will establish new columns, okay, in 40-foot by 40-foot grid spacing, so that at the end, you will have an open warehouse-type concept. Okay? 33 feet, actually, inside clear. Okay? We've still got a little bit of room for joists and things like that. So it's a very interesting construction project to go through to convert that 80-foot building down to 40 feet. What's happening with the site is we are actually doing several things. The first thing we're doing is this appendage that my highlighter is on serves as a loading dock for the current building. Trucks on this side would back into this appendage. We are proposing to demolish and eliminate that piece of building. That piece of building measures approximately 40,000 square feet. So it's a... It looks small. It looks small on this little aerial map, but it's actually quite a big structure. And then the parking that exists on the north side of that loading dock appendage will also be deleted. What we'd like to do on the east side is reconstruct that site so that it serves with our loading docks, our parking, our entrance to a very small office, and trailer parking located all along here, which again is that conversion to a more traditional warehousing space. Now, Adam will talk in a minute about his tendency for this building, and they are weighing in on some of the details, but of a 350,000-square-foot office, we have approximately 6,000 square feet, Adam, of office space. 6,000 square feet of office space. There'll be approximately 15 employees in that building. So it's low in terms of vehicular trips. We will continue to maintain the gravel emergency access road on the east side, and we have a smallish area for some surplus trailer parking on the south side. The last site improvement I'd like to quickly touch upon is stormwater. Stormwater is a sensitive land development issue with just about every project, and as I mentioned at the onset, when Hallmark was built, they essentially drained everything in swales to this particular pond before it got outletted into the wetland and ultimately into freshwater brook, and that's how they did things 35 years ago. That stormwater science has grown exponentially over the few years, those years, and we know a lot more about stormwater. We have better ways to accommodate stormwater that's normally associated with a paved parking surface. So what we hope to do here is pitch this paved area into a rather long grass swale, a ditch here that'll travel south, into a sediment for bay. A sediment for bay is like a plunge pool. We purposely recess a rocked area so that water can sit in it and reduce velocities during peak events, and then allow for the settling of some of the bigger grit particles that are in the stormwater. From there, it'll outlet into about a half an acre size of a... We're gonna actually construct a wetland here. And that wetland will have a number of elements to it. It will have some open water. It'll have some marshes. It'll be surrounded by plant materials. It won't be the golf course pond that has mowed grass right to the water's edge. It'll be a very soft look. And in that pond, we're purposely controlling the outlet so that we handle big peak events. Okay? We purposely undersize a pipe so that water can't get through, and it builds itself up and then lets itself out over time. And the combination of these measures, the swale, the for bay, the plantings, the detention, really serve to attenuate the new runoff that's coming off this paved parking lot. There's about two acres of new impervious surface associated with this project. I'd like to conclude by just saying that, again, thank you for coming out tonight. It's kind of rare, as I was driving down tonight, thinking that most site plans that I deal with have new additions. They have new square footage. We're actually taking away square footage, but we are adding site, and we think the improvements to the site and the improvements to the building will create a 350,000-square-foot traditional warehouse distribution facility that I know Adam has a tenant lined up for now, but looking ahead 30, 40, 50 years, it'll be a very functional building, whereas the building we have today was designed really for one specific purpose. So I'll turn it over to Adam, but I'll be here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Good evening. Again, for the record, my name is Adam Win Stanley, and I'm a principal with the development company of Win Stanley Enterprises. Thank you again for taking time out of your schedules to hear our presentation tonight. I'm just gonna provide just some more basic information about the project and what we're trying to accomplish at the site. So as Jim and Valerie had originally stated, the high bay building that's in the back is, for all intensive purposes, it's a functionally obsolete building that doesn't really work for today's market. The racks, you know, support the roof structure, and the actual positions of the racks are designed to sit on a lightweight slab, so it's... They were holding primarily cardstock, and the whole facility, if anyone's ever been in it before, it was robotic, and so they had these robots that would go up and down and pull the cardstock out, drop it on a conveyor belt that would eventually move into the front building. So we studied the building very carefully and ultimately decided that we didn't think that we could lease the back building in its current form, just because there's not a lot of companies that would want something, you know, with no lights in it, no heat, and, you know, very slab positions that don't hold a lot of weight. So we developed this approach, which I think is very unique. We've actually gotten a lot of contractor interest in the project. We brought in McNamara Salvia, who's one of the top structural engineers in Boston, to help us figure out how to redevelop this building. And ultimately, what we figured out here is by taking off the roof, removing all of the racking systems inside the building, and then coming back in with a new structural grid, as Jim had mentioned, 40 by 40, and then putting a new roof on it, we could convert this building to a modern distribution building. When I had first looked at the Hallmark property six months ago, I was thinking that we would more than likely have to demolish this building altogether, because we weren't sure what to do with it. And so our reinvestment back in this building will be kind of $15 to $16 million of reinvestment to convert this into a traditional warehouse structure. So right now, I know we're here talking about the back building. The front building is fully leased. We are under construction on the Core and Shell project. We just received our building permit today for our anchor tenant-specific improvements, which we'll be immediately starting construction on. And then, you know, we're hoping to start construction on this building here around somewhere between October 15th and November 1st, and we would have about a year of construction to ready this building for occupancy. My tenant that has leased the building is a company called Plastapack, and Plastapack is a privately-held, large company that has 9 million square feet of real estate around the world. They have $2.4 billion in sales. And they basically... Plastapack makes all different types of plastic bottles and tubes. They make toothpaste tubes. They have Polar Beverages is one of their big clients, and they make a wide range of different products. Lots of information online about the company. And they are consolidating a number of their warehouse operations in Massachusetts into Enfield. So it's a great tenant. They are also leasing 225,000 square feet in the front building for one year to kind of hold them until they can move into the back. And then somewhere around mid-November, we're gonna be publicly announcing the anchor tenant, which is a Fortune 500 company, and they've asked us to keep their name private for, you know, for a few more weeks. So that's essentially the project from a higher level, and I just want to say again that we're very excited to be here in Enfield and to... Very, very happy with the leasing success that we've had at this property. You know, to lease up a million square feet of space in a reasonable timeframe is hard to accomplish in any state that you do business in, and it certainly has been, you know, very good leasing velocity, and I'm very proud to have two, you know, great companies that have, you know, that are willing to reoccupy this facility. And I also, again, appreciate town staff, Roger's efforts, assistant town planner, as well as the building inspector, and a number of other folks that have worked very hard with our continued applications, and, you know, there has been a lot of hours that we've put in as a team, mostly because both tenants are looking for a December 1st occupancy on the front building. And obviously, the back building, you know, we have quite a bit of construction to do, but our tenant is also pressing for a fall of 17 occupancies, so we're obviously anxious to get that project started as well. So that's pretty much it. I'd certainly be open to answering any questions I can about our project, and I certainly would like to be open and as transparent as possible, but, you know, hopefully, we've provided a lot of good information for everybody.
Roger, one question. Is... They have what land certificate, and if so, what's the number?
Yes. As you recall, the reason that you offered the special meeting is because of the cycle. They went to wetlands on Tuesday night, and they haven't... I mean, they got their approval. They don't have their wetlands permit yet, but they have the commission approval, so this commission can act.
Okay. I didn't know if you had the number that we could quote.
I haven't.
Yeah, we haven't.
And there'd be no other except fire, and I see he's here. Just allow him to speak whenever he wants.
Fire chief is here.
After the fact. But, right. I don't think we'd have engineering, because they don't usually do that.
No, the engineering comments are...
On the sidewalk.
Have been addressed. And so we have been moving this forward. There's one little thing, just a little housekeeping detail, is on your master engineering drawings, you say the maximum height of the building is 77 feet, which has caused some confusion. Your architect will say it's 42 and 1/2, so you said 40 tonight. So I know I got asked by one commissioner tonight where that 7... About that 77 and 1/2, so it is 40. 42 and 1/2, it says on your architectural, but it's not 77.
No, it is not.
And it's the actual height of the building is gonna be reduced to 33 feet.
Yeah.
And the reason it's gonna be 33 feet is that the back building, similar to the front building, is gonna have a state-of-the-art... building, is going to have a state-of-the-art sprinkler system, which is called an ESFR sprinkler system, which is early suppression, fast response, and so you have to have three feet of clearance to the top of your commodity. I just, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add as well that the building itself is going to be a state-of-the-art, you know, modern distribution building. So we are obviously reducing the height of the building, reestablishing new life safety systems, all new heating systems, new sprinkler systems, new LED lighting, all new loading docks, all new asphalt, so it's quite substantial.
We're very pleased you're here for that. Usually, we're into raising the roof instead of lowering it, but I thought I'd put that in before Roger got there.
Yeah, we'll make sure that is in the record.
Mr. Chairman.
Sounds like that sprinkler system, you aren't going to need the fire department at all. That's good.
What about a business? Any questions from the commission? Rich?
I guess I just have a couple of questions in terms of, you know, and again, I'm looking forward to seeing this building, you know, reduced in height. You know, being an engineer myself, I totally understand the, I guess, challenges you're going to have in terms of, you know, and, you know, supporting, you know, the perimeter roof system or the perimeter wall system while you're taking the roof off and not allowing anything to collapse, and the fact that you are going to be adding some loading docks where you might not have frost protection for some of those footings, so you might have to do some underpitting for some of those things. So I'm sure that everything's going to be done according to code requirements and, you know, everything that's required for, you know, again, a stable structure. The only comment I do have is that the architectural drawings show four loading docks of three docks each, and the site plan shows two loading dock areas of six docks each. And again, I'm not, I know you're going to catch up to one another somewhere, so you're not going to do either or, but you're going to.
That's a, that's a great question. So the honest answer to that question is, we started with four docks of three. We decided along the development process to consolidate the docks, make two positions of six. Ultimately, the client determined that they, because of the length of the fascia, they wanted to go back to the original design, which is four locations spread across the back of the building of three docks per location. So we are back to four docks of three at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
There's been a number of, we've barraged, you know, Roger with lots of little details. As you can imagine, you know, working with large companies, and there's a lot of different folks that have different ideas of what, and these things get sorted out, but ultimately, the tenant wanted, because of the length of the rear of the building, they wanted more spacing with the docks, so we've gone back to that particular design, and that's what we're working towards at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Mary? Charlie? No? I had a couple of, Fussin' O'Neil had in their statement that any type of vehicle may use either driveway. And as I recall, when we first started, it was designed to limit truck turning on the east road, or it was an east preference anyhow, or coming off of Shaker Road anyway. I think, is it the east or west? There's one of the driveways, in fact, I believe.
West.
In my mind, they put a rock there, so it also would stop some of the turning.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Chair, this is the west drive.
Right.
This is primarily used for loading around the back building, and that's what will be used for loading to gain access to the east side parking lot.
Well, hey, I asked then, will that driveway need some changing? Are you going to allow trucks through that? You may have to change the turning radius on the front.
No, that's how Hallmark used that intersection. In fact, they, Hallmark had put a small, little piece of chain fence right here so that this parking lot, this 500-space parking lot, was used solely on the east side driveway for cars.
Right.
And this one was used for the trucks.
Right.
Yeah. And so we're maintaining that pattern, sir.
Right. I didn't know that, because in that report, it said either.
Okay.
Now, I noticed on, and it may be related to what Rich asked, are we approving on the map, I noticed it's a future dock base on a lot of the maps. Are we approving those at this time, or is that something that would be coming in? For example, I think it was A100, the map has future dock base noted.
If you don't, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I think if there is confusion on the plans, we're looking to have the plan that has the four dock positions of three approved, which is what the client's looking for at this point, and I believe that that's.
Four of them that are noted, is it?
Yeah.
And I think I picked it up on another map, but I didn't write down the number. So those are.
Mr. Chairman, what's really been happening here is because we've been moving at WAP speed.
Oh, absolutely. I understand that.
We're trying to accomplish as much as possibly can, and so things don't tie together, and then we're working them through. And I think that, like, you'll see the second item tonight is for an administrative approval for an administrative modification of your Phase 1 approval. And if the commission is so inclined, I think it would be helpful if you did grant the Director of Planning authority to sign off these minor changes that are consistent with your overall approval. Currently, you modified that approval a couple of years ago, for whatever reason, but in this situation, given the time constraints, it would be enormously helpful because, you know, we do get into that situation, or we got the same footprint for the docks, but we're rearranging them a little bit, and that sorts of questions. So, you know, you might consider that when you get to your.
I thought that might, will have to be in some of the other going on. Okay. I noticed also on sheet number 60023, it's talked about underground storage tanks. What are they storing?
Water storage unit.
I don't know. Is it for the fire?
I can answer that question. So at the property right now, we have, we have two above-ground storage tanks, and then we also have two below-ground 10,000-gallon oil tanks. So right now, that question, I believe, relates to the low bay structure. There's no tanks in the ground related to the high bay building. It's going to be an independent, gas-fired, you know, rooftop heating units that will, air handlers that will sit up on the roof and then, you know, put heat down in the space.
Well, I didn't realize that that one was not heated, and I didn't know what these tanks were.
Yeah. So we're, the whole building is going to be, you know, refed with all, you know, all new utilities to support the building. Your specific question right now is, right now, we are likely to remove the two 10,000-gallon tanks. I know this isn't relating to what we're talking about, but we're putting a new state-of-the-art condensing boilers in the front building, which are very energy-efficient, gas-fired. We have not, in any of our properties in Connecticut, have not used oil in about seven years, but many years ago, all of our central plants were retrofitted with dual-fired capabilities that we could move back and forth between oil and gas, and we would take advantage of whatever fuel source was cheapest at the time. And Hallmark also did the same thing. Gas prices have obviously been very low for a number of years, and I think at this point, we're likely to remove those tanks and take away the option of a dual-fuel choice.
I didn't know if there was something that the Hallmark had used for gasoline or for trucking or whatever else was in there.
They don't have, Hallmark did not have anything on their site to pump gas or anything along those lines, if that, if you were thinking about along those lines.
As Charlie mentioned, they could be water or something. I know we've had tanks in for fires expressions in some areas too. And being in the wetlands, I was just curious on what they were, but that's a wetlands question.
Yeah, those particular, the underground oil tanks, they're actually mounted up. They're on the other side of the, they're on the backside of the low bay.
Well, I noticed, yeah, they had higher elevations than the rest of it.
And then there's two twin 250,000-gallon above-ground water storage tanks, and that is for pressure, to make sure we have adequate pressure for our sprinkler system in the building.
Okay. That's all I wanted to clarify. That's all I wanted to clarify. Any, is it no further questions?
Mr. Chairman, you asked, I'm sorry for interrupting. You asked a question earlier about the inland wetlands permit number.
Right.
I'm prepared to give that to you. IW 573.
Okay, thank you, and that should be referenced.
Yeah, I mean, there was, as you said, I mean, we've been moving at WAP speed, and your architectural drawings say not for permit purposes, but we made a condition that they give us once that are for permit purposes, so we're trying to be as accommodating as possible.
Okay. There's no more questions, except the fire marshal want to make a statement, I heard.
Thank you, Adam. Good evening. My name is Charlie McSod. I'm the fire chief with Shaker Pines Fire, and we sent Roger a letter telling him we're supporting this, and we've had nothing but good luck since this group came into town. As Roger said, it's been a whirlwind. I want to compliment the planning staff and the building department staff, along with my people. These people are meeting daily as things change. The people that are doing the project are more than accommodating, and everything appears to be right up to snuff, so we're supporting it as the fire district of Shaker Pines.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Roger?
I, you have a proposed resolution there. I think it covers everything. The only thing that I would ask you to consider is whether you wanted to allow the Director of Planning to approve minor modifications that are consistent with it.
Separate motion after the.
Oh, whatever you want to do.
After this motion, it would should be separate. And that would pertain to this project only at present?
Well, you have a second item on the agenda, which is the first thing, and what I'm just in, I'm just trying to anticipate is that we know that in order to line up some of these things, and as the tenant gets more involved in the project, there may be other minor changes coming along, and so we're trying to, you know, anticipate those to the best that we can.
Well, 1683 would be S02, or are you talking, what is 1683? Cover all of them?
Well, no, the only thing we had tonight was, that we'd asked you for, is the next item on the agenda, but in conversation here, I was just putting on the table that if you wanted, if you were comfortable with it, and you wanted to add a condition of approval or add something in there, or you want to do it separately.
We'll do it separately. Thank you. Okay. If we, nothing further, I'll close. Actually, SPR, the next one should be a separate, it's a separate motion, but it should be part of this hearing, so it should be 168302 labeled there, because you want the, well.
Yeah, I mean.
All right, so.
Make a separate motion on the same agenda, right?
Yeah, okay, well, yes, okay. I'll close SPR 1683.02. Come on, Mary.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, you know, special, our SPR 168325 Bacon Road, whereas the Town of Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has.
Rich, the O2.
Oh, O2?
Yes.
Okay. Let me put O2 over there. Okay. Whereas the Town of Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed an application for a warehouse distribution office space at 25 Bacon Road I-1 Zone Industrial, and whereas the proposed plan represents a good reuse of property, now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves the site plan application to allow for warehouse distribution office space located at 25 Bacon Road I-1 Zone Industrial with the following conditions. And there are the nine specific site stand, site-specific conditions. There are eight standard conditions, and a condition 18 that must be met prior to the issuance of a building permit, and three additional conditions that must be met prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for 21 conditions in all.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? I think it's just, one, to me, it's great to see such a large facility immediately really occupied and back on the market, really, and the proposals. I think it's outstanding work on the stuff.
I'd also, I'd like to add, I think that it's a very, you know, industrious and ambitious, you know, to try to remove a roof and restore the building within the interior, it is a lot of work. And, like you said, being an engineer, I compliment you on your, you know, due diligence, and, you know, I look forward to, you know, maybe even seeing the plans or seeing the construction in, because I've never actually done something like that myself, and I think that is very, very.
It's a very.
Let's just, I don't want to get in discussion because we're still open.
But anyways, I just want to compliment.
Agreed on that.
Anything further statements then? All in favor? Opposed? No abstentions? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Now, the motion would be in order to authorize the administrative approval of minor amendments to the approved site plan for Phase 1 SPR 168302 for the entire Phase 1.
You might do the one you just approved.
You're right.
Should do it for this one, and then the next one would be the.
Right, a different one. I don't know if they need any for, what was the other one, was 1683?
About anticipating on both.
Will be, anticipating on both, there will be change.
When we get that and see the size of it and so forth, and what's happening, we'll do it. 1683, 1683 is the main one, is Phase, that's part of Phase 1 though, isn't it?
Yes.
Is that the number? So you want both 1683 and 168302?
Correct.
I'm not sure what the difference is on the numbering, so I just think if you said 20 on all Phase 1 and 2, 25 Bacon Road, we got it covered.
Well.
Jennifer wants to talk.
Jennifer?
I'm just noting that the next item on the agenda is a request for administrative approvals for 1683, which is Phase 1, and we're discussing right now Phase 2, which is 1683.02, so I think under this one, we would do.
168302, that's what I thought, okay. So the motion would be then for 168302.
Okay.
What's your desires, ladies and gentlemen? No, all it is is what is worded right there, authorization to allow the.
I make a motion to authorize the.
Administration.
Administration to make minor amendments to the site plans on 168202, 168302.
Right.
Phase 2. Phase 2.
It's Phase 2, that's why the O2 is there.
We're talking about Phase 2 right now.
Authorization for 168302.
Right.
And that would be also in consultation with a proper.
Right.
Town offices. Okay. Is it seconded already?
Seconded.
Thank you. Okay, discussion? I think it's something that's necessary, in that it's an un-moving project, and in particular with, as Rich points out, it's something that's very, I guess, particular when you're doing that with no support, and you don't know what they may meet, and Roger will have to solve the problems, so.
That's why we have him.
Right. I need, so, I'll move the question, then, all in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous, Roger?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'll say, and, well, I'm glad we can help. I always wanted, and I don't know why, to visit this facility, because I was-
Upside down.
It was interesting, and it, and it's an amazing project. I heard, no, it was all robotic, and they went around, picked things up. I understand they did the same at the project, it was Lego, did the same at their building. So, that's an interesting project. Okay. On the table, you found another addition. Let me see, where am I?
I think you have the request for administrative approval on Phase One.
Right.
So, if you could, if you could consider a motion to allow the Director of Planning to approve administratively minor modifications to site plan on Phase One, that would also be helpful. We have one at the moment, which is to relocate an approved sidewalk based upon a tenant request, and I would think normally, the relocation of a sidewalk would be something that you'd be comfortable with me reviewing, so, but there might be others.
That's 1683, then, I didn't finish that. You're right, okay. So, that motion is in order, then, too, to allow 1683 authorization.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the administration approval of minor amendments to the approved plant, site plans for State, for Phase One.
Phase One.
Well, yes, SPR 1683.
1683, SPR 1683, Phase One.
And that would be in consultation with the proper departments.
So, yes.
Yes, okay. Any discussion? Hearing then, all in favor?
Second, yeah.
Opposed? No abstentions, unanimous, good. Anything else we can do for you?
Thank you so much. We really do appreciate this, this is-
Well, we appreciate your coming into town, and as long as we can help you out, and we have a dedicated group up here, and dedicated employees and volunteers in town, so, very happy to have you here.
Hope Mother Nature goes along with you.
Oh, tears.
That's true.
Have a winter like last year.
I'm going to put a good word in for you, for Adam, to give you the Cook's Tour.
That'll be appreciated, I'm sure, by all of us, and after such a glowing report by the Fire Department Chief.
Yeah, certainly, if any of the commission members or the town staff would like to come down Wednesdays, I'm onsite every Wednesdays for most of the day for construction meetings. Certainly be welcome to do a hard hat tour at some point of the low bay building. And when we get to the point where we start construction, I would agree with Richard, it's going to be a very interesting construction project to deconstruct a building of this size, to take something from 80 feet to 33 feet. And when we first studied the building, you know, some of the contractors felt that it was just easier to demo the building altogether, because it is complicated to figure out how the shoring is going to work here. And so, we ended up bringing one of the top structural engineers from Boston in. He's a wonderful man named Joe Salvia, who's been involved with a lot of the top projects in Boston. He got personally really excited about the engineering challenge and the structural challenge of trying to orchestrate deconstructing a building of this size, and he really kind of sorted through with our team how to do it, how to shore up the walls that aren't supported by steel beams, and we've got it all kind of sorted out at this point. So, I think it's going to be a really interesting project. We've gotten a lot of interest from the construction community, because nobody has ever quite seen a project like this. Some contractors, obviously, have been scared away, and others have, are intrigued with something that's as unique it is, as this is. So, I think it's going to be a fun and interesting project to work on, and I'm grateful that we found a way to save the building and create a taxable building on the rolls, because at one point, we were looking at just knocking it down, and we've been able to figure out a way to reuse it, which I think is great. Thanks.
Well, thank you for the invitation, and when you're ready to see us, we'll have Roger set up a date, and probably could arrange for one of the town transportation buses for us. That'd be great. Appreciate that, thank you. On your desk is other business. Roger, you want to explain those?
Yeah, as the commission knows, we have had some issues, which, in terms of executing documents, and we have, your, the secretary at the present time is unavailable. The bylaws call for the second vice chair to fill in when the secretary is unavailable, and the second vice chair is also unavailable at the present time. So, in consultation with the town attorney in the past two or three days, we are asking the commission whether they would authorize the commission chair to sign maps, permits, and documents that have been approved by the commission. So, it's like, plans that you're aware of, you are approved, and going forward at some point, you're going to have, you may want to take a look at your bylaws, or the offices, but at the present time, we're trying to solve an immediate issue we have in front of us, and so, I drafted something up for your consideration, and certainly, you can mark it up and do anything you want, but it would basically authorize your chair to be really a third option to sign commission plans and documents, and that's basically what we're talking about.
I've been old for years.
Start him, Mary.
It's up to what the commission decides, that's-
I make a motion that we authorize the commissioner to sign, the commission chair to sign commission maps, permits, and documents in the absence of the commission secretary.
Second.
Well, it should be also the secretary of the second-
Oh, and the- And the second vice chair, I'm sorry.
Because these, they're the ones that are in your bylaws.
Doesn't matter.
And as Roger said, sometimes, he's off traveling, the second vice.
So, just for clarification, are you moving the way it's written, or are you making any changes?
We don't have that.
He's making it-
I'm just reading it off of the agenda, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I thought I had given them out.
All right. Okay.
I don't know where it is.
We have that.
Yes, some people got it, some people didn't. That's quite bad.
So, I make a motion-
You got one.
To authorize the commission chair and vice, wait, let me see, all right. All right, forget it, I'm not saying it again, all right.
Yeah, go ahead, Mary. I've already screwed it up.
I put forth a motion that the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission authorizes its chairman to sign commission-approved plans, maps, and permits. This authorization will be in effect until further action by the commission. This authorization does not alter the ability of the secretary, or in the absence of the secretary, the second vice chair to sign such plans, maps, and permits as presently authorized.
Thank you. Second.
The only, that motion, okay, in discussion. Just to get it out, perhaps, and the only reason I thought might be in, well, okay, I guess we can leave it that way, it doesn't make any difference, yeah.
Don't want to get the vice chair in there, either?
Well, no, he's, no, well, no, you might as well, I don't know how many, I'm always around.
Yeah.
I don't know.
So, it gives now the authorization to three people to sign to-
You got three, but Peter's usually here.
Typically.
He's here probably more. It's just that he's in Italy, and sometimes, in this case, that he's, could be traveling, he goes off on his visitations that he has to make, Alan, so, it's, it's just a safety net.
Yep.
Sounds good.
And you included this whole thing is written.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, oh, okay, no, that's all right, yeah, if you want. Then, if you're ready to vote, all in favor? Opposed? I guess it's unanimous. Okay, any, anything further, Roger? No, I-
No, that's, actually, it's a special meeting, and we can't bring up anything else, so-
Okay.
A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
I second the motion.
And a motion's made, but, okay.
We're all going home.
And we're, stand adjourned.